Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/49countynewsTV.
Hello, my name is Bo. I'm the manager here at Splash in a Flash, Frank's Automotive, and Frank's Quality Housing LLC.
Since 2009, Frank's Automotive, Splash in a Flash, and Frank's Quality Housing LLC has provided local professional services for our community. Services such as auto detailing, mechanic work, 1995 oil change, 24/7 towing and roadside assistance, pressure washing. Ask about our VIP membership. We would like to thank you for your business. Call us at 205-921-2378. Located at 115 Pike Trail Hamilton, Alabama. Like us on Facebook, Splash in a Flash LLC.
If you would have a prayer for us, we'll go for it.
Let's pray, Lord. O'er loving Lord, I thank you for this time we, uh, you give us, Lord. Lord, do instead, thank you for the day you've given us, Lord. Lord, we look to you. Lord, we ask for your wisdom, your guidance, your strength, Lord, to help the people in this county, Lord, to whatever they need. Lord, we just ask to, uh, your blessings upon us, in Jesus' name we ask. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All leading orders.
Do I motion we approve the things that we've, you all got before us here?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
I see.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Hold likewise. Mr. Lindley? Didn't show up.
I'll be go see him.
Uh.
I'll go see him.
Steve Shaw was out there too, he's supposed to be here with the bid. At 9:30. You over the bid? Mr. Lindley's not here, my, my show, so Lord, I know we don't see anything until 9:30, do we over the bid?
Okay. You talking about, um, on the 24th afternoon?
Yes.
Yeah, I will look into that in a bit of time and, and, and give, give render in ten minutes.
Okay. So we'll sign bids at the unit. Are you generally on the agenda for a day or something, or?
We're just sitting.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'm sorry.
No problem.
So we'll sign bids at 9:30, so.
Weekend, I guess. Jimmy go about.
There you have Jimmy, uh, he'll, we put you in here, Jimmy, let you do your business, there you go.
Okay, uh, just made that, that, yes, sir, made that sign, declaration.
Are you going to explain it to, uh?
Declaration of emergency, what this does is it opens up an avenue, the state has theirs, has declaration that they, February, the, the night that the, uh, storm got so bad.
Yeah.
It opens up an avenue where we can request assistance from other, other counties, mutual aid, state, whatever we need will hit. And if, uh, and it starts any kind of price, price gap. Also during this time, uh, if any kind of, if we can file and claim a presidential declared emergency, which that's what we've been doing, is working to see if we have meet, meet a threshold. If any FEMA money is available, this declaration of emergency will, will help us proceed that money as it comes back.
Have we received the threshold amount that we got?
We, we have, uh, between the county commission and the towns and the, of the quarter authority, we have exceeded our threshold, which is $116,000 for this county. Now that we've got to meet the state threshold of $7.6 million, and that's been met too.
Who are you talking about, the state?
Statewide. Now that the governor has, has requested already a declaration of, of emergency for the president. Feel like we're going to get it, though, we need on that end.
Yeah. How much have we declared in the county?
Right now, we're just short of, now thi- this is the county commission, county, all the county committees, then cities and water party, it's a shot of half a million dollars.
Okay.
Sure it is, probably two.
They what?
So do I have a, uh, come on back motion, assign this declaration?
I'm making a motion.
A second. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Hold likewise.
And please, any, any more damage that y'all find due to the floods that we had, please turn it in, or any, any wind damage.
I had one yesterday. That's what I said most, that's probably two.
Anything else, you?
That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Yeah, I saw that one.
Okay, about 2,000, I have funds another block back, so we see, we see 100, 100 press for it.
Okay. We, I look, look.
Yeah, I don't, bring me up.
The shipping be good.
Yeah, yeah, they ship, when I ship overboard back, they send you thousands back.
Yeah.
About six, six, 600 shipping and I?
No, it's 8600, didn't, you send over rock back, it'd be 600.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Be 600 total.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that was shipping and everybody, they're gonna pay the shipping back on your over, too?
That's, that's cheap.
Mike, do you have anything other than, uh, bid openings that you want?
Yes, sir, I do.
Oh, we could.
Uh, you know, we talked about Babel State using our CBO, uh,
Yes.
testing site, I, I guess y'all need a motion in a second, go ahead. Recommend that we, we allow them to do that, if that's.
Y'all, y'all members, what you talking about, do anyone like to make a motion, or?
I'll make a.
Talk about it?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Okay, do we have any discussion, anything?
That Hunt was gonna write up a, a, a lease.
Labor release, and we, and they, we talked to them about that, and they're okay with it.
Okay. Okay, so y'all favors say aye?
Aye.
Hold likewise. There you go.
Okay, we talked about that HRR resolution, and agreement, the funding agreement with the DOT. I recommend that we adopt that resolution and authorize the chairman to enter the agreement to accomplish those HRR projects. Those were those guard rail projects, and those, that I mentioned down at the last meeting.
And remember that Ford River Road's getting to our rails?
And we'll have to do the work to get them ready to do the guard rail installation, but it's a 90% federal, 10% local match.
Okay, have motion we put the guard rails up?
I'll make a motion.
Say it.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Hold likewise.
Okay, and also I have, uh, the Canada of Nine Bridge, we opened bids on it. Glasgow Construction Company Incorporated was the parent of this, and recommend that we concur in the award of that project to, to, uh, Glasgow Construction.
You already looked over this and recommend, that's your motion?
Yes, sir, that's actually Atrip funds, Ramp Funds, and Zero County Funds.
Oh. Zero County.
Those are the kind of projects we like, we wish we could do more of.
I don't think we can better deal with that, y'all, I have a motion of that.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion?
I'll say it.
A second, all favors say aye?
Aye.
What's the, what, what starting date on that? He hasn't made you a day, how much time he got?
Um, it'll probably be.
Third day?
Probably another month for, you know, pretty soon before you start it.
Okay.
We gotta get, we gotta get our letter of concurrence back to them and all that, and then build process. You're probably looking at a month to six week for that. And the only other thing, we got, we got our, our two bids, we got our, um, surplus, the tractor and boom over, then we got the, the V5 fence, the district fence. So we'll, that, that nine. Yeah, I guess you go ahead and be signed some of this.
Yeah, it's like, then, then we go down.
Need a platform or something.
You would do, you would write, I thought about that, we need to, whatever, so people would just probably come and, yeah.
Yeah, we heard that little microphone.
Please, let me see, little green, green haves.
What's the biggest thing you tried to add?
You like to sign, right? We've got one. One's all we got, though.
I hope it's right, I don't know yet.
What up here?
Let this sit for a minute. Yes, sir. Okay, then we'll go ahead and, uh, HRR up here.
How did we get those, uh, guard rail projects that you flagged on?
Yeah, it was a, it was kind of a competitive category, it was like your funds.
Can you buy more of them?
If, if yes, you can't for guard rail?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, we can.
I've got nowhere, um, 63, down that hall, we, uh, down the lower, uh,
We sticking to the foot here, it's a given percentage.
Farley's shop down there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We've had people run off there.
You know what she's talking about now, there, by, on 63 down.
Yeah, I know Farley's shop was, I'm not really sure.
Go down there, he's deep field around that.
Is it, is it on a bridge, or just guard rail?
No, it's 50 foot, 50 foot.
There's a creek down, there's a little creek down at Krauses', but it's, creek is parallel with the road, but it's.
This product was specifically, I have to remember, at the very near Scotty.
Yeah, right, yes.
So. What is a state, what was state, um, like they did down there, coming out again, pull up guard rail, putting new guard rail down, back down?
Well, actually, we talked a little about this the last meeting, the, the, the design standard was changed. Safety required a height plan, four inches. And they're making them, I know, that's, that's just, that's just what it is, yeah.
Well, in other words, it'd be safer to leave in the ground for reasons, unless car is airborne, and, uh, so if it is airborne, for you to bite kitchen.
I, I, I didn't do the technical information, technical, I wasn't involved in the studies, but that's, that's what they recommended. We'll wait on Bob on the John Deere type of bid.
Yeah.
Did you guys, did you ask them, are y'all meeting something, or? I ain't never recognized, I, I don't know.
I was also trying to talk to Tim, I believe.
They done get it, but they even trained, yeah, quite a lot.
Yeah, I was supposed to quit, actually, I mean, by.
Yeah, man, I was looking at radar, we go on big flag.
I thought we supposed to have like 20, 30% today, and then get up and it's raining.
That's what we like, when you showing.
Yeah, I know, I done had to change the fire file.
How do you get, how do you get a radar on that? I can't get. Open air weather.
I got 33 forty gals on mine, till I get your radar.
In other words, I have to put a dozen gals in there, though.
Yeah.
How you do that?
That's yours.
Yeah, I'll be fine, I was gonna say it.
Or green, and it's right up around Winfield, very yellow.
Yeah, well, this, that's one for the green, I just wanted to switch, just, uh, I-22 down, all the way down through Columbus.
What have these water lines ready to go in, or going in, or in right now, anybody know? On the rule over there? They need to give it one.
I see.
Water?
Yeah. I know, okay. Well, no surprise, that was your start.
Two ways.
General.
General phone?
Yeah, general.
Mine near, I think it's in.
Well, what's this, this, this darker here, is that more rain?
Yeah.
More dense, more intense?
Yeah, around 37, we're at, dark.
Yeah. That's just coming on wrong.
How do you want it coming? That's what we need.
I think it's bound, who she's talking about there.
Mr. Zipco, you remember what area, what's that, Duvan Zipco? What, what's Duvan Zipco?
35563.
That's what I talked about this morning. We're gonna get the, force, we're gonna get the wind. Oh, red. 20, 100 bucks, I guess she told us.
Black men. Look like men raining on our hearing right now. Yeah, why?
Yeah, I just wanna see, like a little bit of thunderstorm there, or, or forget thunderstorm down around Columbus.
I think you know what the choice it was like, I need the Germans to do that, back to you all, with the thunder.
It's over and over that.
Just talking about milk, well, I haven't been fed this to him, I won't be.
Between you and that one, I don't know, because, because here, it's.
It's what they want to do, but.
I got a lot on me.
Oh, we're gonna, oh, I have to open the water up?
I got some. We're waiting on the, we're waiting on the, we're waiting on the.
Title, what's the title, it's not, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna try and change that clock, yeah. The name was changed. Slipping off.
Yeah.
Hey, they talking about leaving, they got savings time.
I hope they do.
Florida has done, I read on the internet, what Florida done, but it took, they did say.
They all can change if he's at all, that's what, that, I used to change it all day.
I'm good.
Well, do it. I can get up in the chair and fix that clock.
Mine's always like, they don't change it.
That clock, I thought it was right. Yeah, I can't read.
I didn't know what all those stories were telling us, yeah.
Is that, uh, 9:22 now?
Terry had been at, for years. Well, they hard him, the same year they hard him.
I want 9:23. 9:23 now, 9:23, just turn.
Raised the state, Tufus, Tufus, the well, and that's what I was y'all, I don't know if you went, but Terry stepped in, they like to fire him, he got a little bad. But I think he had a straight.
It's held, around it, against bridges and sewers, and I'm just gonna, I've got clay down there, I've got the pack back there. It was, it was from the flood, you know? Okay, I didn't, I didn't turn it in.
You don't got, black guy, what, you run black sorcerer? He's black there.
I, I just heard that yesterday, she was sweet late.
Okay, sweet late. 84 year old.
I fantasize she's had to be in here today.
He would, I might be putting that story down there.
Yeah. Yeah, but no, I guess they've got residents over there.
Hey, man, did they get the piss line, water line, okay?
We called line, okay, and I talked to Chip, he, he wasn't going, he said he wasn't going to go there by the bridge, I think, he told her, and he said he's like, he did on that water line, maybe the last one, it would've won.
Yeah. That's why, when you do that now.
Oh, he had, uh, we, we, uh, I don't care, the, the, the time dates had expired.
Yeah, he's, yeah, I was hoping, but I was, he's gonna be sure, we can get over there, we, we.
He says he's gonna be on the water line the very last night.
Yes, well, he said, cause it's like we should, then.
Right.
That's when you say, well, that, that rock, what you got, you break your. But that other rocks, and wait, that last, was it three? That's going off, so.
Oh, he's, he's working on that. Hey, while we, while I'm thinking about it, I talked to, uh, one Fed's commissioner Saturday evening, and he's gonna get it lined up, where we can go down and look at their jail. I don't think it's anything like what we're looking at.
What medium we went to?
It's just 100 prisoner, but, you know.
We looked at Winston County, did you ever go look at Russell?
Those were pretty nice, weren't they?
Yeah.
That's what we talked about, we asked them what changes it made.
They done, they done told me that, if you didn't want one of you.
That's what, that's what that commissioner told me, he said they life on them, what, between, on the pile, what, between years. I didn't know that.
Yeah, where they get it set up. We found that small by the judicial system, too. They gotta, they gotta run. But in order to do it, you practically have to move everything.
Russell's all bad, and so. You know, like.
So we may have to move it all.
Just goes up here.
The name, do you know? What's he sign, mine?
Him and their ear.
They, they got, you're saying, they're.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Everything they do, computer run.
Based on that. Yeah.
A lot of these ain't been signed by David.
Yeah, David's on one of them.
I talked to, uh, I talked to one person. They told me that we need to look in, then, and we were considering doing both, if they'd been grant money for each one, instead of together. You know, he said you need to look in and see what's available that way, you know?
I said, what's that shirt, which one of us?
We, uh, we did, we went, we went Saturday, right there, um, you can get grant, you can get grant money for the judicial system, but you can't.
We, uh, we did, we went to, we went to Saturday, I did, um, you can get grant, you can get grant money for judicial system, but you can't, uh, plan out, and that's what we talked about.
Well, that's what he more or less said, you get, get more grant money for judicial system than you can, can a jail. But now Fett's, Fett don't have office in this new one or that, I mean, because it's built right next to the old jail.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's six million dollars.
They got near enough, they clear.
Did have, he told me they had six million dollars. Hundred, they had six million dollars, and they paid four on it, and borrowed two million from a local bank, you know, where they could keep two million cushioned.
How old's Liam? How old is he?
They're building it right now.
Yeah. They swapped the money, they swapped the tax off, building a reservoir, decided not to ruin them, yeah.
That's not where that money come from.
That's what told me it was.
He told me this money came from the buried mines over the years, that the reservoir money was all, well, some of it may have come up, but they had to use...
Who you told you?
Shane.
Yeah, was, and Mr. Ray told me it's coming from, came from the tax, uh, the tax off that...
He posted on one of my posts on Facebook the other day, that was coming from the trust fund. The gas and oil, with gas and oil drilling.
Trust fund, yeah. That's what he said.
The, he post, I, I put a post on Facebook the other day, and he, that's what he said, that they're, that's what they were getting their money from.
I thought he...
Well, they do different, that's why I went.
Oh, I...
I thought her, for her, new manager, pretty blunt over the other day, about several taxes getting in back, so...
That's true. It's nine thirty now, we can get my...
All right.
Have they heard anything?
Rowing back this way.
Have they heard anything on our, on our senator this morning, what's going on?
Well, I don't know, but...
I heard they done pulled it up, had it on the phone.
Well, it's high, so?
Yeah.
Hell.
I know it's done, send it from, huh?
Hope you don't fire it.
Shouldn't have been more, if you're gonna do it, should have been more if you're gonna do it, do it right.
What, we gonna get a hundred thousand another night? What I mean, well, they took our four and gave us five.
It's lost nine thirty-three.
I'd say that the date that the figure was, at ten thirty, usually about eight hundred thousand more than what we're getting now.
I would listen, I would listen to Sturts, sir.
That's about a mile, I thought you...
Yeah.
For sure.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thirty.
Okay, here we go. Uh, we sent out bids on a perimeter fence for the District Five shop property, we've, um, received one bid, Cronton Fence, Winfield, Alabama. Cronton bids nineteen thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars.
They gone up, what's that, forty-two?
Nineteen thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars, Cronton Fence, Winfield, Alabama.
How many acres is it?
Nineteen, four...
It's, he, I, the, the survey was included, but I don't have the, the...
Well, he must have crawled, went across the back, and, uh...
It did, it did cross the back.
That's fencing the whole place in, it bobs, new place on it.
Uh, do I have someone make a motion next week, they look at the bids next, so, meet and go to it?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. All favors aye?
Aye.
Can you look that over, make sure it goes around the whole situation?
Yeah, it does, we'll, we'll confirm that in the bid.
But that's your, that's your shop, then?
Yes, the shop, yes, sir.
Cause I'm gonna have to deal with this sooner.
Okay, this is a surplus property bid, uh, city of Henneger.
It's over Jackson County, it's a big case.
It's far as somewhere around there.
That's left end, yeah.
Got yourself that.
The city of Henneger bids seventy thousand dollars, seventy thousand.
What's on the what?
Trying to sell the, of a surplus John Deere tractor with, uh, with an Alamo cutter on, on the side of it. And if you're willing to accept this bid, okay, then you make a motion.
Make a motion, let's, I'll second.
That's after Mike and Hunt review everything.
Yeah, okay, better motion, second, all favors?
Aye.
Say aye, or he said aye, if I was told likewise.
And I guess once we get him, we can prepare an invoice and send it to...
Okay.
Those are all the bids, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, we know other bids, is there a motion we hear? Second, all favors aye?
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com backslash forty-nine county news TV.